All right, the meeting of the Buchanan City Council order. Ask if you join me in for a moment of silence. Thank you. We'll respect the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Terry, you want to talk about the meth ordinance?
Well, I'll pass for now.
Jody?
I'm a hold for now.
Okay, I want to, uh, jump in our agenda here this evening down to G2, which is the first reading of the ordinance, 380 something, meth abatement. And the last meeting, I believe that we intended to table that until the first meeting in July. John, you made the motion, was that your intention or not?
That was.
That was intention. Was that everybody's understanding?
Yes.
Then we'll not take that up seeing that issue will remain on the table until first meeting in July. Let's proceed with our rest of our agenda. Michael?
Yes, you have in front of you in your council packet, Resolution 2014-13. That will be our final budget revision and budget adjustment for fiscal year 2013-14. As you know, this is the last month of the fiscal year and it's about this time that we do annually our overall general fund budget revision. And you'll see that in the next several pages past the actual resolution itself. I do want to make a couple of notes before you consider approving the resolution. The first is under the mayor category expenditures, it says transfer to sanitary fund. That's the remaining $50,000 of $100,000 that council had committed to assisting the sewer department with the work down by Wesleyan College in the Brooklyn Street pump station. We're transferring that 50, it's not necessarily needed to accomplish the project, however, to ensure our commitment that we made to the IJDC that we would show a transfer contribution by the city council in the city of Buchanan for 100,000. This, the 50,000 will complete the already approved and placed and transferred 50,000 to make a total of 100,000. It is my anticipation that even though this money is not, not really going to be used, it's more just showing the IJDC that we made that transfer that we've committed to, it's my anticipation that sometime at the beginning of the next fiscal year in either July or August, we'll be transferring that 50,000, at least 50,000 of that back to general fund. It's just, to dot the i's and cross the t's, we need to make that, that full 100,000 transfer. Another item of note, if you'll notice on the very last page of the breakdowns, there's a notation for conference center payment and that pretty much speaks for what's said. If you'll recall, when we received the loan from the USDA, there was a deferred payment with interest, with the interest to be paid, one year after we had entered into the agreement with the USDA, and that reflects that interest payment. It's a one-time interest payment for the year of $7,505 that is to be paid by the end of June, and so that needs to be in there for our June bills, so we need to put that in the budget as well. Other than that, street department salaries, we had a lot of overtime, as you know, with the winter months and keeping our guys out, so the salary line ran a little, little short. And of course, with the salary, there's FICA tax and group retirement and some other items that we had to increase as well to make up that difference. Other than that, from, from just an observational standpoint, everything else is pretty much just standard. As you all recall, those of you that have been on council for a while, at the end of June, we always, at this time, always have a significant budget resolution and revision for general fund, and this is no different, this just reflects that. Overall budget revisions, total 183, 255. And with questions after questions, I'll make a recommendation, council, consider approving Resolution 2014-13.
Motion to approve Resolution 2014-13.
I move, we approve Resolution 2014-13.
Is there a second?
No.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any now, questions or discussion?
No questions.
Questions being called, all in favor, will respond to the roll call. Ron?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Myself, yes. John?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. Continuing my report, you do have in front of you a breakdown, well, a little bit of a breakdown summary of the financial report ending May 2014. Just want to note for the record that our total revenue to date was $3,479,091.77. Our total year-to-date expenditures are $3,217,984.3, which is in excess of $261,107.74 revenues over expenditures. As always, if anyone on council would like a detailed breakdown of each department in line, please feel free to contact me or see me after the meeting, I'll be happy to provide that to you. Couple items under old business first, our health insurance renewal. As you all recall, council at the last council meeting presented to you, after a couple months of work, our health insurance renewal and everything that it took and the avenues that we explored as far as health insurance and made a recommendation, it was recommended by council to, to hold a meeting with our employees to discuss the health insurance potential change. That meeting was held last Wednesday with employees. They, I think the meeting went fairly well, and they are aware and have been advised of the changes. I will, again, for the record, note that our health insurance deductible remained the same. Our co-insurance limit did go up, it's now 4,000, single, 8,000 family. And our office visit stayed at $25 a pay, but our specialists went up from 25 to 35 and our emergency room visits went up from 25 to 45. I will also note for the record that our current monthly premium, current monthly premium is $75,376. Our annual, our monthly premium with renewal would go up to $79,990 a month, or if you want to look at the yearly, our current yearly is $4,512, and that would go up to $958,800 yearly. As with was with the previous council meeting, I will make the same recommendation to council to approve of the proposed renewal for employee health insurance for 2014-15.
Motion to accept administrative recommendation, renew our insurance. Second, motion made and seconded. Question or discussion? All in favor then?
I'm sorry, just thought of one quick question. Is there any, we're not given any indication from the carrier, I mean, we have no idea if we're going to face another big increase next year or not.
We're just, we're doing that.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's all, I'm sorry.
Ready for a question?
Sure.
All in favor signify, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
It's the majority's.
Okay, the next item is under new business, and I need to bring this up to council from a fiscal standpoint and then possibly get some direction. As you probably know or may not know, Mon Power and First Energy, our electric provider, has put in with the West Virginia Public Service Commission a great increase with the city of Buchanan's power or electric bills. We did receive a handout from them in the mail to look over, and one thing I want to note of interest, and I've been looking around the state, and I know the city of Morgantown and the Montegalia County Commission have looked at, I'm not sure if they have proceeded further, about putting in some comment and protest of the rate increases. But one thing that was significant in this handout of importance as far as the city of Buchanan's operations are concerned, is there's a section under there for street lighting. And as you all know, within our budget, we do have a line item for street lighting, for all of our streetlights in Buchanan to keep the electric on. I do want to note that there's a, there's a section under here that identifies a base increase, and then there's a section which is the total rate increase, which includes a surcharge. So essentially, what we are looking at is the surcharge, and it also lists residential, commercial, industrial, but for the sake of the city, we concern ourselves with the street lighting. The surcharge and the base rate increase that, that Mon Power is proposing under this handout that they provided would actually increase, again, this is with the base and the surcharge, street lighting by 25.07 percent, 25.07 percent. I do want to make a note that the city currently expends on average $58,838.50 a year for street lighting, that's 58,838.50 cents. If you absorb a 25.07 percent increase, that would be an additional $14,249.41, $14,249.41 added on to our already estimated $58,838.50 average cost. That's going to be significant. We do not have that in our budget for next year, so if we were to absorb that rate, and this rate goes through with Public Service Commission for Mon Power, we'll have to make a budget adjustment at some point, probably at least mid-year, to make up, to make up the difference. So I wanted to lay that out there because that, that's a potential expenditure on the rise, I'm losing my voice, excuse me, and I wanted to get some, some advice or direction from, from council, you know, in keeping up with other municipalities around the state that are considering, is it the wish of council, would they like to pursue, and we have until the 31st of July to file a protest or a petition to intervene to the Public Service Commission again by July 31st. I'm not sure if any of you have read it off this in the paper, but it does pose at a 25 percent increase, a pretty, pretty significant change.
When's the last, when's the last time they had an increase?
That I do not know, David.
I mean, I, I think before, I would say yea or nay, I'd like to know what, what the last increase they had, how long ago was it?
I can only speak for the three years that I've been here, we have not had one, but I don't know.
I don't, I don't ever remember having this, I've been on the council almost 10 years, and I've never had, I don't think we ever, at least from my memory, this is the first time I've heard about this.
It says a separate surcharge to recover capital costs associated with the federal mercury and air toxic standards provision that was passed in 2014. I'm not really sure what that is, but probably some good track oversight. But if council would like to look at that again or consider it, if you'd like for me to get additional information, which is fine, I'll, I'll yield to you what direction, but again, if we want to file something, it has to be by 31.
At what point would we need to make a decision on something like that?
I would probably think that you would need to make a decision at some point, either between now and the next council meeting, at the latest, the council meeting in July.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think you need to find out when the last actual increase took place.
Well, when, excuse me, when was the last rate increase you had at the house? Anybody remember? Seems like we do that every, now and then.
Every year and a half, it seems like we've had one, I'm sure.
And, uh...
But we've, we've had one recently, haven't we?
I'm sure that our rates here at city hall go up, but that the rates for the streetlights do go up, it's just that this is...
Our streetlight expenditures have remained the same, at least for the three years that I've been here.
So, uh, because I think the streetlights are on a contract so much alike, they're not metered. Jerry, can you speak to that?
Some of them are.
Some of them are.
The metered ones, we of course have control, and that's one of the things with looking at other lighting options with LED lighting. Currently, there's no reduction in price if we put up LED lights or with pay for LED lights, we put up one, one that is just a bottom month light, which is like most part of streetlights.
Most of our streetlights are a monthly rate.
Yes, and dependent on the type of light is, is what they charge us as the base rate.
Well, I mean, looking at this again, because there's citizens in the room, with the, the rate base increase in the surcharge, residential would go up 15.85 percent, commercial 14.54, and industrial 10.12 percent, so.
I still think, I think it would be good if we would write a letter opposing the increase and ask for...
What, is there a, is there a cost to us for getting involved in a protest?
I don't believe so.
There is some.
It's just, you know, filing that, you'd probably want to have some type of justification or reason why, hardship or something that...
Well, what, did they cite the basis for their...
Well, reading along this, it says, uh, it says the proposed increased rates and charges will become effective May 30th, 2014, and that's, that's a whole other thing under Public Service Commission. Unless otherwise ordered by the Public Service Commission, it will produce approximately 95.7 million in increases in base rates, which is an increase of approximately 9.3 percent and a 48.4 million increase due to vegetation management surcharge, for a total of 144 million, 144.1 million annually in additional revenue, an increase of 13.95 percent.
My understanding from just from kind of consuming some of the news on this, this is related to the purchase of the Harrison Power Station in some perspective, and financing, financing that, that purchase, that they purchased this from some subsidiary, or some... Anyway, the point is, yeah, I think we should protest, I mean, I guess, I think a 25 percent increase is on its face, it seems unreasonable, but, you know, I, I agree with David, maybe we'll warrant a little bit of, of investigation. I guess the question is, what are the, what's the possibility of changing some of the streetlight options and going with an LED and then metering?
I'll get to that.
Oh, okay. That was a talking point, but we can...
Yeah, and I, I mean, I think when you say we're paying $58,000 now, and we've added streetlights, in my recollection, is over the last 10 years, but it'd be interesting to see, you know, have they ever asked for this kind of increase before, and at what point, what was, what was the amount? And I, I just, I want to have more information before I say, hey, well, let's go ahead and file a protest or complain about it.
A year or two ago, municipally had a session or two on city lighting, and they had approached Mon Power, for lack of a better term, to look at other kinds of lighting, lighting that would be more energy efficient, green in nature, and they were not getting anywhere. But there's a concerted effort in many larger communities to, to move that direction, to reduce the charges. My problem is, for this kind of rate increase, that I would venture to say we'll probably end up with the same lights that we've had for many, many years, and we don't, they don't have any savings, we don't generate any savings, so. I think there's some, we signed, actually looked up the contract that we had, which dates back to the 20s or 30s sometime, when we signed on for, for the electric company to handle all the streetlights. I think this is something that is bigger than this rate increase, this is something that we could perhaps save some money in the long run by moving to a more efficient lighting system. But I don't want to speak for Jerry, that may not be something that, wants to get involved with.
Well, the, the rate increase is real, and if it goes through as a, you know, I guess part of my discussion is really an environment of where this would head as far as our budget and our, and more specifically, our, our street lighting budget. And then the other thing was just to get some information and feedback from you, we have until the 31st of July to do this. I would like to, with council's blessing, contact the city of Morgantown, find out their angle on this as well, and I'll get some information, a couple council members have requested as well. But just wanted to bring this to your attention, because part of it, again, is the real rate increase, and the other part is if council wanted to pursue, pursue some type of protest, so I'll, I'll get back to you with that information, and I'll contact the folks in Morgantown and Mon County, see.
I think Mon County's having a lot of problems down there with their power plants that supposedly are being bought and sold and, and just not working out the way they thought they would be, especially the one across the line in Pennsylvania that they just put online not too long ago. I think maybe the power companies have not researched enough to find out what's going to be, what's going to pay to use and what isn't. We're, I don't see any way that we're going to have any decrease in, in power any time in the near future in this increase. I don't, I, I agree that we should get the information that we need, but I think we should also be rather hastily to go ahead and oppose this. It wouldn't hurt to oppose it and get the information also. I'm not for any increase in 15 to 20 percent of an increase on a residential budget is really going to hurt some of our senior citizens out there. It's, 20 percent of the increase on, on what my mother paid, I know, would, would have money made, and she went out, went without some, some medicine that she needed or something because people living on just Medicare, they, they can't take these increases.
But Ron, they're not talking about the residential customer, they're talking about...
Weren't they talking about residential too?
They're talking about residential, commercial. Yeah, but not 25 percent for the residential.
15 percent for the residential.
Yeah, but I'll tell you one thing you can thank, is the president's ruling and EPA and what they're doing in 19 states with coal. I mean, if you want, if you want to protest, let's, let's find out more information and send the protest where it should be sometimes. The power, look, I'm not defending the power company, but we're, we're in a, in a sort of a revolution in this country as far as going green, and it's, I think it's worthy long-term to do that, it's going to help us all. Of course, it's not going to help China or India or anything, but, you know, I think you have to have a long-term plan and approach that's reasonable, and unfortunately, in this country today, I don't think we do that half the time. I, I agree, I don't think a resident can take a 10 or 15 or 20 percent increase, but that's going to be the bottom line, I'm afraid, for the future for some of us.
Well, I think we should stand up in, in the protest for our citizens here in Buchanan.
I don't, I don't disagree with that, but I think we could get a little bit more information before we do that.
Well, Michael has stated that he'll study the issue and report back first meeting in July, so.
We have, we have a recommendation.
We can take it up then, we'd still have time to protest. You say you have until the 31st of July.
There's always some protests.
And each one of us can protest individually, too.
Yes, we can.
True, and all that's awesome.
That, that's all I have. Other questions for Michael? Okay, Mitch?
Good evening.
Good.
I have a few quick things. Had a couple grants that we were working on, we're kind of in the process of closing those out. We had probational forestry grant, that was $2,500, we're closing it out, and we had a DHHR grant that was for $5,000, we're in the process of closing it out as well. Talked occasionally about radio updates and communication issues, spoke a follow-back on some new IRP handheld radios that we were getting through a grant through the Upsher County Office of Emergency Management. Jim Ferry and his staff worked on that grant, so Upsher County's getting 56, I believe, is a hundred new IRP interoperable digital radios, and they're going to distribute those to the fire department, so Jim Ferry and his group deserve, deserve kudos for that. Also, we're doing some radio upgrades in-house at the fire station, hopefully that, the equipment, hopefully be here this month, we're working with radio technicians to acquire that and get it done. We're still in the process, I'm glad Terry's here, maybe he can help me out a little bit, don't mean to put you on the spot, with our testing for our firefighter interns, we talked to Rich, we have received our applications, we're now, we need to get with the civil service committee, I believe, and set dates for our physical fitness and then our RIT testing. So hopefully, Jerry, we'll give it to get all that, get something, we need to get that finished by the next month or so that we can. We went yesterday, had a good time, did some public service stuff, we went with the middle school to the rowboat race yesterday, had a blast, and watched the kids, had, Jody hooked us into that. Now, we've been going for, we've been here a year that they haven't, and it's, it's great to see the enthusiasm of these young kids, you know, and some of the creativity is really, really unique, the kids have a good time, our guys did watch these cardboard duct tape boats paddle out in the river and turn around and paddle back, and some of them could take transatlantic, I guess, trips, and some of them couldn't, so.
Submarines.
Some of them were sinkers swinging, you know.
Before they got started, yeah.
There was really nice, there were some nice boats, and there were some that had to abandon ship, but we had a great time with this kid, and the kids had a ball, and it's kind of encouraging to see the, the teachers and the staff that have the patience to do that for those kids, kind of, kind of reassuring. I guess, general business, I guess you have a letter in your packet from our probationary firefighter in regards to requesting an extension to comply with our residency requirement. He is a, he's a very good employee, he went to work, his first day was December 9th of 2013, so his six months is coming up in the next few days. He has requested an extension to comply with our residency requirement. He has, if they haven't moved, our ordinance says if they haven't relocated within six months, they take a file extension. In fact, he went to work here in December, and the weather was kind of bad to be out house shopping, and when somebody takes a new job in a different town, I'm, you know, it's kind of rough, I guess, at times, to expect this young man just to have to move, but nonetheless, he does have to comply with the ordinance. I didn't expect him to move the first couple weeks, you got to see if you like the guys you're working with, if you like the job, and he fits in well, but he has requested an extension that is per our ordinance, that's what needs to be done, I believe Dave corrected from him, but he hasn't moved in six months, he files a request for extension to you folks up there, and then along his near course. I would recommend that you grant him an extension, I think we should put a timeline on that, maybe, my recommendation would be like a 60-day extension, and we'll revisit, make sure he's making progress, sometimes house deals, you know, if he wants to rent one thing, he's looking to buy home as another, so.
You know, Mitch, when you look, when you look at the kind of economy that we're in, six months is probably not, we ought to probably change that to a year.
Well...
Anyway, and I, I don't think 60 days, I think we ought to give him, it's my opinion, another six months.
Well, I, I, I agree that six months initially is short-term, but also, it's important to myself and it's important to the citizens, important to our fire department, that our employees comply with that, and I don't mean to be harsh, but I think we need to keep pressure on our new hires to make sure that they don't get in the habit of dragging their feet, and I'm not saying that's the case for this young man, but I think we have an ordinance, and it's an imperative as the chief of Buchanan Fire Department, that our employees comply with that ordinance as rapidly as they can for the betterment of our department and the citizens, so.
I, I don't have a problem with that, I think that's part of your responsibility as a fire chief, but, you know...
But that's why the six months are, we can...
But I, I, I would recommend we eventually change that six month to one year anyway, because it, when you think, when you think about it, if you have a house someplace else, you know, six months is not a reasonable time.
I think, there was a lot of discussion about that, Dave, in the original ordinance, and I think the six months, Dave can jump in, I think one reason that we did the six months, too, was just to try to get the ball rolling and make our employees understand that, hey, this is here, and we...
Well, he knew, he knew this before he...
Yeah, so he's, he's certainly, he's a fine young man, he's doing a wonderful job, he's not fighting the ordinance at all, but he, you know, and defending him, he, you know, he lives in Randolph County, he work with a bunch of new guys in a new department, and I don't expect to get him to move his first two, three months, you got to see if you like the job, if you're going to fit in, and he's got a probationary period that he has to complete, and there's some technical stuff about working for the fire department and with our civil service that he kind of has to endure, too, but.
I would recommend, and I would also make a motion that we give Mr. Pritt a 90-day extension on his...
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, we give him a 90-day extension, the chief recommends 60.
I'm happy with my, I mean, real estate transactions can be extended.
The, uh...
I, I don't recall.
I believe that our... I believe that our ordinance allows up to an additional six months.
Yes.
And as we're, as we're discussing this, I mean, I'll support a 90-day extension, but I would like us to think about, long-term, is that if you have that six-month period to find, you know, housing within the area, are there any people that we're sort of turning the spigot off on because, well, I can't, I can't move in six months, that's unreasonable? So I think we have to look at that side of the equation, too.
Call for questions.
Question's been called, all favor of the motion signifies open second.
Aye.
Opposing, no. See you next.
So we're 90 days, sir?
90 days.
Is there a, can we come back here another 90 days and give another extension?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
We can give him up to six months and then according to our ordinance, we find another time.
Well, as I will approach this with him, is you can give him a 90-day, you know, don't think, we want to see some action and-
He's passed his probation, there's no doubt about him having a job.
He has passed his, with his civil service probation, he's on probation for a year. His civil, his city probation has a city employee for the fire department this six months, but with the state code of their civil service, he has a one-year probationary period.
And what happens if he doesn't pass that one-year probationary period?
If he doesn't, if, if at the end of the one-year probationary period, if on day 364 he has not fulfilled, doesn't meet the requirements, then he will be terminated.
You pretty much know the way to-
That's why we have, we have, he just did, with the fire department, we have a six-month evaluation, six-month probationary evaluation, and he just had that. He's a, he's a very well-trained individual, he was trained before he got here, he's a very hard worker. I mean, we're fortunate to have him, he is, he is a good, he's a good kid. He is the first employee that we have had that has had to comply with the residency requirement.
And it seems to me, I don't want to beat a dead horse, obviously, but the, it seems to me that if you have a six-month probationary period for the city, one year for the civil service, that in many ways, it's unrealistic simply to give a six-month period initially for your residency. I mean, I think they ought to be coordinated, so, that's all.
Okay, what else you got, Mr.?
That's it, Mitch, any questions?
Other question for Mitch? Thank you, Mitch. Jay Holland?
I'll be quick. No, I will, I will.
Can we time it?
You can time it, you can time it. Sunlink fiber optic upgrade project, I have nothing new to report, but I think Mr. McCollough's going to talk about it. Island Avenue water line improvement, nothing to report. FEMA Homeland Security and Emergency Management grant application, that's where we're applying for two generators and retrofitting of the raw water intake at the water treatment plant. Probably won't hear anything till the first or middle of July. Water treatment and plant improvement project, where we're going to make repairs to the sediment basin and the valves and the pipe gallery. The working drawings are about 90% complete, the overall project is about 25% complete, again, with documents expected at the end of this year, beginning of the next, and construction starting in May of 2015. The water storage tank cleaning and inspection project, reported on that last month. Utility Service Group was awarded the contract and they actually started collecting the paint samples this Monday, and they're going to start doing the ROV inspections of June 16th, and it should take about two to three days to complete that, and then a month to compile the reports and report back to me and Kelly. McDonald's Route 20 lane lighting project, nothing new to report. I'm not going to steal some of Jerry's thunder, but Gateway East project, that will resume the week of June 16th. We were hoping it was going to be next week, but it's going to start June 16th. We will be starting down at College Avenue East Main intersection and working our way towards City Hall. And I'll send out press releases, and I'm sure Chief Gregor will do the also about the changing of the traffic patterns, where we'll be closing down a half a block at a time to allow the guys to work, you know, in a safe work zone. The Public Safety Complex, the second round of bidding and advertising for the restroom materials was held, bids were open on May 20th, we only received one bid from Architectural Interior Products out of Morgantown to supply everything but the water closets for the four restrooms at the Public Safety Complex, and they're going to supply those materials for $7,230. The materials will start arriving tomorrow through Tuesday of next week. So that, once those materials arrive, the only thing that's left to do at the Public Safety Complex are the installation of those bathrooms, that bathroom equipment, the cleaning and waxing of the floors, moving in of the office furniture, and we'll be ready to move them in down at the Public Safety Complex. Still, still waiting for, still hoping for the late June, that's what we see. It will depend on some furniture, I understand everything, but a couple filing cabinets are in stock, so they can store that down at the Public Safety Complex in the conference room, and we'll just move it in when we're finished with the floors. Quarter Eight's water line, nothing new to report. Lumos fiber optic, this is the only new project that we haven't talked about. Lumos Technology would like to install a new fiber optic line down at Jawbone Park and turn up Trader's Alley to provide Chapman Technical Group with new fiber optic lines. It's going to require about 425 feet of underground fiber optic cabling. Presented this information to the Consolidated Public Work Board a couple weeks ago, where the mayor was given approval pending engineering review and a legal review. If it comes, if those two reviews come back, you know, he's been authorized to proceed in with the easements and allowing Lumos to go through that. Sam and I had a site meeting and, you know, with the Lumos and their subcontractors, we've completed our engineering review and they've complied with the changes that we requested. And Dave has, may be commenting on it, but he has some concerns or, you know, a little bit that needs to be tweaked in the agreement before we sign off on that. So that's where we stand on that. It's kind of the last project, is the Gateway East Transportation Enhancement Project, it kind of ties into what Mr. O'Neil was asking about. Our application was not one of the ones that were approved, there were close to 50 applications submitted, only 25 were selected. There were no deficiencies, they just ran out of money this year. It was strongly suggested that we make sure that we submit, resubmit that same project with the adjusted prices at the end of this year, because Rebecca Davis, who's the project manager for this, was really disappointed that we didn't get it, because she thought it was a good project, was what we're trying to do, and providing the residents of Liggett Edition a safe walkway to get to Buchanan. But didn't happen this year, but strongly suggested that we resubmit in December and hopefully get it for 2015. Where that ties in with the lighting is, that project included retrofitting our streetlights along Main Street and East Main Street, as well as the ones on Gateway West. So from the underpass at Gateway West, all the way, at Liggett Edition, all the way down to College Avenue, it would be converting all those lights, the incandescents, to LED lights. There are going to be a total of about 70 to 80 lights that would be retrofitted, and those would reduce those costs, you know, but wasn't selected-
Those are all metered street lights?
Those are the metered, but Gateway West would be metered, and then East Main and Main Street are metered lights, so those are the ones, you know.
So there would be, there would be savings.
There would be recognized savings on that one, and that was the plan all along, but since that fell through, won't be happening. But it was to convert all the incandescent lights on Main Street, both directions, to LED lights, and it's still part of the plan, we just got to update those.
Where else are there metered streetlights in town?
Other than the parks, Tom, that's about all the, they're all lights-
The parks are all metered lights, too?
Parks are all metered lights and-
What does it cost to convert one to LED?
Yeah, that was where the, you know-
Does it make some financial sense for us to do it?
In the long run, within the 10 years, absolutely. And Jerry and I actually attended a seminar last January in Sutton, and we're pre-approved, you know, got approval to actually receive rebates. It's based upon the types of lights and the number of lights we have now, they figure out a cost of what it would save us, and then we actually get a portion of that back as a rebate, so they would, you know, invite us, it can, you know, require us to go out there and get those LED lights, but it just didn't happen this time.
But as you, but as you're, when you're looking at a payback, Jay, there's a difference between what is going to be if we receive a grant versus if we just want to add ourselves.
Right. We would have to buy the lights and convert them first, submit that information to the power company showing that we did it, and then we would receive the rebate. But we were pre-approved for those, and a matter of fact, I actually talked to that program's project manager last week and was wanting to know the status, you know, because we hadn't acted on it yet, and I had to break the bad news to her. And I said, please don't close the project, we'd still like to be eligible for it, but we won't know anything until, you know, early, I mean, early 2015, whether or not we received, you know, that grant or chosen for that grant. So they still have us on the books for the eligibility, but I've just been updating her as to what the status of that project is.
How much would it cost to maybe do, just change some lights on our own, maybe in the parks, for instance?
I don't, I have that information, but I don't have it with me, you know, I can present it the next time, but I don't have that with me, because we put it to bed and-
Yeah, right.
And I just don't want to get a false impression out there.
Understood. Thanks.
That's it.
Other questions for Jay? Thank you, Jay. Jerry?
Just to expand a little bit on what Jay was talking about, when we did the comparison, streetlight comparison, we tried induction, LED and incandescent, and the LED at the time, those fixtures were about double of what the typical light fixtures were. They were running in the range of $1,0100.
How much?
Fixtures, somewhere between $1,0100 days at that time.
Per fixture?
Two or three years ago, per fixture.
Do you know roughly what, how much less electricity that you're on?
Well, that you're on, when we did the, when we did the comparison, you would save somewhere in the neighborhood of 75%.
75 to 80, you know, so double the cost, but, you know, significant savings.
You know, when we're spending, I mean, so maybe, at least on a small scale, maybe we've got, maybe we could investigate the possibility of converting some of these kind of on our own, you know, not as part of the Gateway projects, but maybe just doing it.
Well, I remember, you know, and I will interject here, sorry. That when we were considering as an additive alternate was converting the 43 or 44 Gateway East lights, and it was close to $36,000, you know, for those, so just under $1,000.
Yeah.
And we just didn't have the money at that time because of concrete price increases and everything. Everything was going against us, so we couldn't convert the lamps at that point in time. But it was considered, so that, you know, that'd give you rough, I wanted to give you exactly, but-
Well, you know, in the face of these, in the face of this electricity rate increase, maybe it's time to kind of revisit that, seeing what makes the most financial sense.
Break even point, please?
That I don't have wrong, there's been several comparisons done, and they're out there on the internet that you can pull up and take a look at.
Depends on who you talk to.
Well, right, and again, you know, it's not just, it's not just the electrical savings, it's also, most of these lights are 100,000-hour lights.
Yeah, they're maintenance costs.
Savings on a lot of it. We have, I know the place collection, anytime that we're replacing either highway lights, we currently replaced all of our exterior wall packs with LED wall packs, and that cost was about 30% more than what the standard light that we had on was. But again, if you're looking at 75 or 80% savings, then the light is much better.
Well, I'd, you know, I'd love to see, you know, you know, some kind of analysis over, you know, maybe take City Park or North Buchanan Park and just say, you know, as a small-scale project, just to maybe, you know, trial, you know, it's a trial to see, you know, it's going to cost us X, but we're going to save over three years, we're going to make it back and save electricity. We got, we got the money, we're looking at Gateway East.
And as Kenny said, a lot of it depends on who you're talking to, what assumptions you're making. You know, I, I was never real, I mean, I'm glad we made the conversion when we did this geothermal thing for the city, but I don't think it was cost-effective unless we had that huge grant from the federal government. And that has a lot to do with what you're doing as far as you're getting grant money or not getting grant money.
Which park has the least amount of lights?
Marion Street.
You're right. That's hardly a good conversion.
Probably North Buchanan would be the least amount of lights.
When you're, when you're converting from incandescent LED, would it be, do you have, do you have to have like 10, you have to do them in a row, or can you hop skitch or hop scotch or whatever it is?
No, you can, you can-
Single point.
Yeah, you can, you can do whatever, one to each individual.
Because one, you have, you have to replace so many lights each year, don't you?
Yes, yes.
I mean, what they can start doing is replacing with LED instead of the-
They do like a retro kit for our lights.
You don't just replace the bulb, right? You gotta redo the size.
You gotta do the ballast, and that's where your cost is. It's the ballast. That's where your cost is.
And again, Jawbone is all, all LED, but, you know, type of fixtures where it is.
So you could have a plan to redo the whole city over a 10-year period? If you don't get to-
Again, you can add two, you know, you could add metered lights, I mean, it's all up to council what you want to do, if you don't get that, because the biggest problem you have with the power company lights, like I said, is it's a base rate, as Rich was talking. You have a base rate for a light, depending on what type of light, if it's a 250-watt mercury high light, it's one price, if it is a 400-watt light, it's a different monthly rental price. But if you convert, if the city said, well, you know what, we're going to all LED lights, and we're just going to go ahead and give the power company the lights to put up for us, but they're going to be LEDs, you're still going to get charged the same base rate per month on those lights. So there's really no incentive to change out the unmetored portions. The only thing you could do would be build, at this point in time, would be build facilities that were controlled by a metered circuit.
Could you convert those unmetored lights to, you know, metered?
It would be very difficult to do every light in City of Buchanan on a metered circuit.
Because you've got to run the circuit.
Oh, yes.
Exactly, exactly, and that's the thing.
You've got to run a whole circuit.
That's right.
Right now, you've got a wire hitting every one of those poles and every one of those lights, and they just tap in there and return to a flat rate, and if you're going to meter them, you've got to run your own wire, and that's not cheap.
You know, you might want to talk to Barry Pritz at the college, because I think one of those loans they had was to convert all LED on the campus outside line.
Yeah, it was-
We don't have one that's maybe too far away from one of theirs.
Yeah, notice that by a company that does a performance contractor, you know, you start getting a safer plate or you may pick up some of it at the beginning, again, it's then going to be guaranteed to save you.
But you didn't have to bid for it, did you?
No.
Well, we have to put it out of bid.
Is this something we need an ordinance to take care of? Do we need an ordinance about lights?
No, not right now.
Just wondering.
Not yet. Go ahead, Jerry, let's leave Jerry alone later.
Board reports, Consolidated Board met Thursday, May 22nd at 4:00. They approved a request from American Legion to hold some Memorial Day events at the cemetery. Had a letter from, which I believe is in your packet, from West Virginia Classic Vehicle Club for street closures, which they authorized the mayor to negotiate times. Approved the purchase of cemetery lots back from some folks. Michael gave the financial report on the market checking of $102,830.65 with a cemetery CD of $225,811.75. Approved the budget revision, approved the LUMOS right-way agreement that Jay had spoken to you about. I presented the city park inspection, if you all were aware, but we, and another member of the street department took a, actually a playground inspection course, and believe it or not, there's a certification for that, Dave. We took that course and in doing so, in order to finish the course, we had to inspect the playground, so we chose one in each one, in Buchanan, Eland, North Buchanan side, and Eland City Park. And I wrote a report on that, and in doing so, identified quite a few inadequacies in our playground equipment, some of which were fairly significant, correct, life-threatening. And so the board asked that we remove those immediately, which we did last Friday. We are in the process of putting the new playground in, hope to have that completed next week with the large playground, and then we will continue work throughout the season in relocating some of the pieces that are there and adding some additionate pieces to that park. So it's coming on- that are there and adding some addition to pieces to that park. So it's coming along. And I was up today and had a little progress the guys made, and I was just amazed at how large. And I went up and laid it out and knew the area, but once the poles are in the ground and you actually get a look at it, this thing is huge. So it's really, I'm really excited to get the thing in and see kids play on it. But that and the guys have been working on some of the graffiti up there and painting with the graffiti and stuff. So we're still working on that. Board reviewed the current cemetery charge for infoterrors. We had some questions, or actually some comments on that, and there's no changes from the board on that. The board had removed or approved the revision of the cemetery grave call form, which simply makes it the responsibility of the person making the grave request to be financially responsible for the service, whether there's an attorney or not. That's a problem in the past. We would get a grave call, get their grave, and someone get buried, someone else. And we were essentially providing a service that we didn't recoup the fees for. So this is just a way to tidy that up. And as Jay had said, we've still got to crew up the public safety complex working, we're installing the playground. And a couple of weeks, we hope to be back on Gateway East, get that project back underway, complete that. Waste collection board met this evening. The board approved the budget revision. After we received a letter from our electronic recycler, that they were going to increase our rates on our catheter ray televisions. It's gone from 10, depending on the amount that we have in a load that goes out, the dilution percentage of the TVs versus the other electronics. We get charged anywhere from 10 cents a pound to 15 cents a pound. And they're wanting to go across the board at the 20 cent a pound. We're still with, with our current charges, okay, but we still take those on the bulky goods that are required to, for free. But at this time, I don't expect any increase in fees, and the board feels the same. Transfers station, we did 2,001 transactions this month with a total weight of 1,391 tons, $116,102.52 of money. Recycling did 68.53 tons last year, last May, it was 48.65 tons. Held, of course, the tire amnesty day on the 31st, and guys reported about 4,000 tires were brought in on that. That's all I have. Unless you have questions.
Question for Jerry?
Yeah, one question, Jerry. Are you responsible for the barrels in the left-hand lane out here on Main Street, the left-hand?
That is our barrel. If you're asking that question.
There were three at one time, I believe.
Installed two cones.
Okay.
Can't have my stuff.
I just noticed this evening, coming out through there, that there were three cars in that lane that pulled right up to the barrel and then tried like crazy just to get around that barrel to turn left. And I was pulling through and I stopped and talked to one. He said, I'm just following the others. I said, well, don't do that. But we need some more cones or barrels or something in that lane if it's not going to be taken care of by the department.
We have, we have put, we have, of course, put the barrel there. And I had the two cones there. We have a request into the DOH to reconfigure that as one. I talked with their signage fellow whenever we put the stop signs up last week up here at the third light on Main Street, that's the third light to flash. And at that time, I asked him, he was going back to his signage engineer, when the mayor and I talked to him up there and present our, what we want to done over here. And I asked him if that had been approved yet, and he said, no, it's not. So we can put a couple more cones out there, Ron, but if it were up to DOH, there would not be barrels or cones, either one there.
Yeah.
It's their screw up. I think they should fix it.
They should, that's right. Mayor had to.
Yeah, Mayor.
Jerry, can I ask a question? The, I saw your recommended changes for the city park. There were a lot of them. And so you're making all of those?
Yes, ma'am, we have to. In order for, for the playground to be certified, all those changes have to be made, yes.
There were a lot of...
There has to be some changes made. And the volleyball court, for instance, has a power line running.
Right.
Okay, either, either the volleyball court needs to be moved, the power line has to go.
And the basketball court, the ball goes bounce, bouncing out in the street.
Right. You have to be fence put up to keep the ball in the court. I mean, there's a lot of little things that have to be done as well. And that's, it's not something that can happen overnight.
Right.
But it's something that, it'll drop forward and the needs there is going to get done.
Like the painting of the, I'm sorry, the painting and sanding and painting of the slides where there's rust there. You're not going to take away the whole slide, you're just going to fix it there, right?
No, the slide's gone.
It's gone?
The big slide is gone. The big slide would not because of, there's no platform, returning platform.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
So it has, small ones still would pass, it has some, that's a tricky, old one, but it could, it could still be used. The large one, though, could not at all.
And you know, I live right beside the park, and basketball, I go to the fifth end of my backyard, or in my yard, and the kids will come over. But somehow, it's going over top of that big bin.
They have to look at that in that side.
Do you give them cookies?
I give them anything.
That's why they throw it over.
I'm very the grasshopper.
We eat a little bit.
Jerry, is there any upgrades that have to be done at North Buchanan?
Again, one of the others, got the other solid inspection over there, and I'm going to present that at next consolidated board. I didn't want to overwhelm them all with one board meeting with things. But yes, there's some, not large things. That's a fairly new playground over there, and follows some, you know, it was under some stricter guidelines when the playground was built. We're talking about replacing equipment. The city park has been there.
It's...
Mayor slid down the slot. I told my, I think I lost my first tooth on that sliding board. Going down headfirst, did a nose plant.
I already had some brain damage.
I have this over there, but somebody is asking about if we could get some new wood chips or whatever it is they put down over there.
That is one of the playgrounds.
That's where you get at your...
What's it, break off your tongue, Jerry? Sorry, while you're talking in North Buchanan Park, is there any new news on the grant application for that?
No, it's Philadelphia.
Yeah.
Right now, Jerry and I had a meeting with him. We're hoping that it doesn't come through as quickly because Jerry has a lot of stuff to do. And I mean, if, they said that if we get this grant, we have 90 days to complete it, 90 straight days. You know, so I'm hoping it either happens in October, November, and we'll ask for a winter shutdown because we can't pour concrete and do all that stuff in the middle of the winter. But I mean, he was pretty adamant that when he, when you were given the go-ahead, you have 90 days to complete it. And he thinks it's going to happen. You know, it's in Philadelphia being reviewed, but I'm hoping it's kind of one of those that could find its way to the bottom of the pile.
Gotcha.
I don't, you know, I want it to happen, but not, Jerry and I don't want it to happen that quick.
It'll be approved next week.
Probably that it's been brought up, you have official notice tomorrow. Gateway East will be hell of a...
Any other questions for Jerry?
Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry. David?
Thanks, Mayor.
Jody?
I just have, I want, can I follow up to something Mitch said real quick?
Sure.
He kind of jumped ahead of it. I wanted to, to the council, want to Mitch personally and publicly thank him and commend Mitch and his department for what they did just did for those kids. I just found out literally Monday evening that I was supposed to coordinate that, calling him Tuesday morning and said, can you be down at the boat ramp? We had 28 boats, all had teams, and Mitch, bless his heart, said, well, you know, wow. And that was very short notice. I just found, he said, I'll do the best I can. God bless him. He came down with a fire truck, a fireboat, I don't know how many firemen. EMS was there. And your own illustrious engineer Jay was one of the judges. And I'm telling you, he and Mark Hayes from Corehart took their judging very seriously on the engineering of these boats. I want to thank him publicly, because they last minute jumped in and did a really fine gentleman's job of being there. And I don't know, you had a lot of people there, but we appreciate it.
These guys are pretty good at covering for me, too.
Well, yeah, it was last minute and they were there. I didn't know what to expect, but thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Dave.
Thank you, Mayor. The Angus suit continues to be in discovery. A box that I hadn't checked in a couple of days today here had three or four new batches of documents. Remember, there are a total of four parties to this litigation, and all of the attorneys representing all of the parties are having to justify their own existence by sending notices of deposition, requests for production of documents, interrogatories, requests for admission. So you know what I know about that, but more to follow soon. I hadn't heard in almost two months from insurance auto auctions after I met at Steve Holmes's request with Michael Madden, his vice president and general legal counsel for this huge organization that has, at least as of April, 180 sites worldwide, like the Buchanan operation. They wanted to know where things stood with annexation. And I said, well, you remember the, at our meeting, I said I need a meets and bounds description and for you to identify who's going to sign the annexation petition. Oh, yeah, we'll get right on that. So they apparently are getting right on that, and maybe as early as the next meeting, we'll have an ordinance for you all to consider relative to their annexation. The Elenzo meeting, the Hot Stuff, Cool Thing, Cool, Hot Stuff, Cool Things Matter is scheduled for next Thursday, June 12th. And I think I'm going to accompany Matt Gregory and Michael Doss to that meeting to see if Buchanan may get some distribution of this latest batch of confiscated and sold properties from the Paglia matter. Working on various things for Mr. Lublo and Mr. Holland on water and sewer. The West Virginia Public Service Commission sent out a packet about three weeks ago. I didn't mention it at the last meeting because you guys were already about three and a half hours into things. But the Public Service Commission has completely changed the ordinance adoption processes. So when we go to do our next, whatever's next up, sewer, water, waste collection, the same thing that we have done for pretty much the previous 31 years, there are going to be some differences, some additional requirements. There are some new presumptions that if the rate request is 20% or less from what the existing rates are right now, that you can go ahead and implement those rates as soon as your ordinance passes. You don't have to wait for 45 days. Formal approval would still come from the Public Service Commission. And if for whatever reason they would not grant the increased rates, then you have to rebate that portion that they don't approve. The way you read the new stuff is presumptively, if you're only doing a 20% increase every two to three year cycle, they're going to allow you to pass that kind of rate on to the customers. The Sutton Link matter is something that I had asked that it be discussed in executive session at the last meeting. And because it wasn't pressing time-wise, we dispensed with that. But there has been a financial amount offered to the city for that trespass over at Cemetery Hill. Since it's potentially litigative and involves property, it would really be best for the council to chat with me about that in executive session. Along that same line, one of the matters that Mr. Holland mentioned in his report, the Lumos bringing fiber optic stuff to Chapman Engineering across the street from us. You hear me say all the time, more meetings than not, that government, particularly local government, cannot be arbitrary and capricious. It seems to me that even though the impact of the Chapman Technical Group seeking to use part of city property to realize their improved fiber optic connection, that we, we as a city should still be mindful that we try to treat people the same. So part of that executive session discussion would also be property related concerning that right of way easement matter. So if that's appropriate with council, maybe you all could entertain that. I'd appreciate it. I have a memo that I'd like to read through real quickly. I know that there's been sentiment expressed that City of Buchanan adopts too many ordinances and so on and so forth. And in talking with Mr. Doss and Mr. Clemmons, and I think I mentioned this to the mayor, too, I thought it would be helpful for us to just revisit why it is that we do ordinances. Do we really have that many ordinances? So bear with me. To members of council, Michael Doss, city administrator, and city supervisors, from me as city attorney, today's date, adoption of ordinances, procedures, and requirements. At the last city council meeting, comment was made about our city enacting too many ordinances, and that our city doesn't need or shouldn't adopt any more or so many ordinances. I want to address that sentiment and remind our council that in order to conduct municipal business, since cities, including the City of Buchanan, are political subdivisions of our state government, that ordinances in many instances are not optional, but are mandated by state statute. There are many statutes that specify that certain municipal activities may be realized only through ordinance adoption. This process of realizing certain things through ordinance adoption has long been at the core of our nation's democratic processes. It is not a bad thing, but a good thing, that permits our citizens to become engaged in the activities of their local government. Municipal laws and policies shouldn't be formulated in a vacuum, or at the whimsy or caprice of lawmakers, but rather should be publicly discussed during the course of multiple council meetings before a particular piece of municipal legislation, that is, an ordinance, is adopted. Chapter 8, Article 11, Section 3 of the West Virginia Code provides, quote, "In the following enumerated cases, the action of a governing body shall," and then there's a bracket, emphasis added by underlining, "and pursuant to the holdings of the West Virginia Supreme Court of Appeals," shall means mandatory, back to the quoted passage, "except where otherwise provided in this code be by ordinance." And there are 11 specific things under this statute, but there are probably another 30, 35 things that are interspersed throughout the rest of the code that require certain things to be done by ordinance. But these are the 11 big things. Number one, the levying of taxes or providing for the collection of fees of any kind. Two, requiring a license to do business. Three, relating to offenses and penalties, means criminal. Four, authorizing the issuance of bonds or other forms of indebtedness. Five, providing for public improvement. Six, providing for the purchase of private property by the municipality or for the sale, conveyance of property belonging to the municipality. Seven, laying out or vacating a public street, avenue, road, alley, or way. Eight, relating to planning and zoning. Nine, granting franchises to public utilities. Ten, providing for a contractual or other agreement with another jurisdiction. And 11, relating to such other matters as the charter may require. That's the end of quote. In the coming months, there will be a number of matters that the council will be required to consider, and if the city is to conduct its business, will require council's adoption of ordinances. For instance, the new armory property that is in the city's corporate limits has not yet been zoned, and will have to be zoned soon for the convention center to be utilized consistent with the council's earlier allocation of $750,000 in funding and incurrence of debt to realize the convention center. Another example was with respect to the TV cable franchise that will expire in December. The new franchise agreement is required by state law to be evidenced by an ordinance. Annexation of properties, increasing utility rates, or reconfiguring police and fire fees must all be realized by ordinances. In my now going on 32 years as your city attorney, I have never advocated the adoption of any ordinance that either isn't required by state statute or that hasn't served our city well. Briefly revisiting the more recently adopted municipal ordinances proves that ordinances are not bad things, but are good and necessary for progressive minded communities, such as our Buchanan. Since June of 2007, our city council has adopted 41 ordinances. Since June of 2007, our city council has adopted 41 ordinances. Forty-two, if the council approves on second reading this evening, the CSX property acquisition ordinance, that is ordinance number 381 of the city. During the past seven years, that is since June of 2007, the city has then averaged six ordinances being adopted per year. Here briefly are the matters taken up by those 42 ordinances since June of 2007. Ordinance 340, landfill rate pass-through fee, June 2007. Ordinance 341, city college property swap to facilitate River Trail expansion, July 2007. Ordinance 342, water rate increase, September 2007. Ordinance 343, sewer bond refinancing, March 2009. Ordinance 344, municipal addressing and mapping, April 2009. Ordinance 345, garbage rate increase, May 2009. Ordinance 346, CVB property matter, July 2009. Ordinance 347, Sutton Link TV cable franchise agreement, December 2009. Ordinance 348, public safety complex fee extension to 2020, December 2009. Ordinance 349, public safety complex bonds refinanced, January 2010. Ordinance 350, Stockard Youth Center Board increased to 10 members, February 2010. Ordinance 351, floodplain ordinance revisions, August 2010. Ordinance 352, sewer rate increase, August 2010. Ordinance 353, floodplain ordinance revisions, October 2010. Ordinance 354, Upsher County Convention and Visitors Bureau allocation and adoption of new distributed formula. Ordinance 355, leased property acquisition and formal conclusion of two lawsuits. Ordinance 356, garbage rate increase. Ordinance 357, abandoned vehicle ordinance. Ordinance 358, charter revision and special election. Ordinance 359, parking fee increase. Ordinance 360, contractors BNO adopted. Ordinance 361, city election date changed. Ordinance 362, Progressive Bank Property Swap. Ordinance 363, refinancing of Brushy Fork Sewer Interceptor Project. Ordinance 364, First Community Bank Property Swap. Ordinance 365, noise ordinance adopted. Ordinance 366, position of city administrator formally established. Ordinance 367, uninhabitable property registry adopted. Ordinance 368, Weimer Property Swap for Sanitary Board. Ordinance 369, water rate increase. Ordinance 370, bath salts ordinance adopted. Ordinance 371, approval of $765,000 in bonds for new armory project. Ordinance 372, smoking ban in city parks. Ordinance 373, cemetery fee increases. Ordinance 374, recycling center and transfer station penalties. Ordinance 375, junk storage ordinance adopted. Ordinance 376, first responder residency requirement. Ordinance 377, electrical inspection ordinance adopted. Ordinance 378, electrical inspection ordinance amended. Ordinance 379, AFP Resources Property Swap. Ordinance 380, Home Row Application formally authorized. And ordinance 381, CSX property purchase for Sanitary Board. Our city has not adopted an inordinate number of ordinances. The ordinances that have been adopted by council have served our community very well, permitting businesses and other entities in and around our city to expand and flourish. Example, AFP Resources, Progressive Bank, First Community Bank, West Virginia Wesleyan College, et cetera. The quality of life has been improved for our residents. Example, CVB funding, abandoned vehicles prohibited, retention of city addresses, the noise ordinance, junk storage, no smoking in city parks, electrical inspections, first responder residency requirements, the bath salts ordinance and the still pending meth contamination abatement ordinance. Our city has been fiscally responsible by increasing fees and taxes to meet increased costs for all of our city's utility operations, parking facilities, cemetery, public safety complex and in expanding its BNO tax base. 14 of the previous 41 ordinances adopted by the council involve financial matters for our city. 16 of the previous 41 ordinances adopted by the council were undertaken at the request of one of our city's four utility boards. Seven of the previous 41 ordinances adopted addressed city real estate acquisition or trade. Only seven of the previous 41 ordinances adopted have imposed some type of restriction upon or required behavioral modification by some segment of citizens or property owners. They are: one, abandoned vehicles; two, noise restrictions; three, uninhabitable properties registration; four, the bath salts ban; five, no smoking in city parks; six, junk storage restrictions; and seven, electrical inspections. Having drafted almost all of the past 160 municipal ordinances adopted by our city, I think it is very important to observe that our city government's actions through ordinance enactment has been the lifeblood of our very progressive community. Ordinance adoption is the primary manner of conducting the people's local governmental affairs. If you have any questions or comments, please feel free to contact us. That's all I have. I don't know if you have questions.
Questions for David? It brings us to our correspondence and you have copies in your packet. There's a Upsher County Convention and Visitors Bureau requesting appointments or nominations to the CVB board directors. And they suggest Thomas Andrew, Daily Ground Manager, as a tourism representative. And they suggest Craig Preiser, Upsher County Extension Agent, to have tourism representatives. And they're suggesting that we need to replace Councilman John Waltz as the city's representative. We'll talk about that. We'll see who's interested and who would like to...
I talked to Laura this evening and told her probably would be after July 1st when we did court in Chinatown.
Yeah, we'll handle that, but I would think we would honor these suggestions. Next item is Rich, you acting on Ron's concern about the electrical inspector inspecting his own work. We've got information he have a letter in your packet. Says Ron was right, he can do that. So he's been...
Say that again.
Ron, Ron got lucky.
One time.
One time Ron got lucky.
First last night.
And Karen has been notified.
One question on that.
Yep.
Is it stated in our ordinance that he cannot inspect his own or did we just go by state code? Or do we need to put something else in there?
State favor, Charles. Yeah. What about does the ordinance, does it provide for like a neighboring community's inspector to inspect, you know, his work or what happens with his work?
That's a good question, but you know, the reason we went to him was because we didn't have a certified licensed electrical inspector in the area. And the person we were using was not certified, licensed. And so I don't know, leave it up to him to find somebody to do it. And we'll have to have more discussion about this.
We'll say that he has one job that he's completed in the city that he inspected himself and will we have to go back and have that re-inspected by another licensed inspector?
We'll check into it and we'll, we'll, we'll see what we can do. I'll talk to John and we'll, we'll work on it.
I think, I think you would.
I would think so, too.
We already talked about, we already approved Kevin Pritt. He had a copy of a report from Christine Bennett. We have requests from, from the West Virginia Classic Wheels Car Club and there was some discussion at the Consolidated Public Works Board because their, their request was a little unclear, but we've now clarified and I've had a conversation with Jim Gifford and with Jared Kimball and the, they're asking for Friday and Saturday, July 25th and 26th. They'll request that we close two blocks of Main Street from 6 to 11 on Friday, 4 to 11 on Saturday, and I would entertain a motion if we approve that request. Do you have a brochure or...
No, it's supposed to...
Motion made.
Second.
And seconded. Further questions or discussion? Not all in favor signify so to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? The ayes have it?
Anybody that has the authority out there like the, the car club does, when a storm is coming towards Buchanan and they make it split, they go around us, we approve whatever they need.
I think they got a guy comes here someplace, is his name Moses or something?
Long Cane.
Long Cane, yeah. Rich, you want to talk about certification in the city elections?
You have, in your packet, the election, of course, was handled by the Upsher County. They actually do the certification and you have in your packet the documentation of that certification. If you have any questions, I observed or ambe observed. Most of the stage is along the way and that's about it unless you have questions.
Questions about the results? None. Brings us to consent agenda, approval minutes, especially meeting May 22nd, building warrant permits and payment of bills. Motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion made, is there a second? Second by John Waltz. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? The ayes have it? And we have a second final reading for ordinance 381, property acquisition for CSX. Get out of here.
We were quiet tonight.
There may be more good stuff.
Be hard to say that fast through.
Hit a new 52 we call it.
How's the electric company doing? What do you got, Dave?
Mayor, as you said, this is the second and final reading of ordinance number 381 of the city of Buchanan, an ordinance authorizing the city's purchase through the city sanitary board of real estate aggregating approximately 2.77 acres, more or less, and situated west of the corporate limits of the city of Buchanan in Buchanan District, Upsher County, from CSX Transportation, a Virginia corporation. As was noted at the last meeting, the sanitary board approved their board's expenditure of the necessary funds to acquire this. There's also going to be opportunity, I'm told, that someday we could do a bike trail out through there and connect the dots with some other things. So there's some other recreational opportunities perhaps in the offing on down the pike at some point. It's my recommendation that the council approve on the second and final reading tonight, ordinance 381.
Motion to approve on final reading, ordinance 381, the city of Buchanan.
Still move.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
And second by Pam. Any discussion? All in favor signify so to say aye.
Aye.
We did decide at the onset of this meeting that we would not take up the abatement ordinance and all the landlords left you on it. Now we take it on. And you want to talk in...
I told you it was brain day.
In executive session. In the executive session about G3?
Could we talk about that? And to that, if we could add Lumos.
Yeah. Okay. We'll, we'll take comments. Tom?
At the last meeting with respect to the automatic license plate reader issue, I offered or I volunteered to draft a resolution and I emailed a copy of that and I've got printed versions here for anybody who'd like to review it. Basically, it simply calls on the municipal league and our elected representatives in Charleston to take this issue up with the opinion that this is properly a matter for state regulation to deal with. So this draft, if anybody has any suggested edits, I've received a couple that I'll incorporate into the version I'm passing to be placed on the agenda for next meeting.
Very well. Did you give everybody a copy, Tom?
I emailed, I got a print copy.
Were there any revisions by Mr. McCully as he suggested in there?
There was one minor, one stylistic change that was made.
If you want a copy, you've got, if you want to check your, give it to me.
That's it. I'm sorry, yes, that's all.
Ron?
Comments? Oh, comments, okay. First of all, I was at the reception, the CJ Maggie's for President Yi. Disappointed there weren't other city council members there. It was an excellent little speech he gave and he likes Buchanan really well. Had down here to talk about the electrical inspector, that's been taken care of. I'd like to thank the city policemen and patrolmen out there for setting up their radar and speeding tickets lately. I've been listening to a scanner that I didn't have access to before and they are writing and stopping tickets this weekend, stopping, writing tickets and stopping drivers this weekend, especially in my area of town. And I think that's needed because we have too many people that are speeding through the intersections and everything. And they've also done this click-it-and-ticket thing, I believe, too, that they're doing a good job with. So thanks to them. I had some other stuff, but it's not going to be taken up tonight, so I'll forego that. And just like to say, have a great weekend, everybody. Nice to be here.
Rich?
The only item I have, just to note that the zoning board of appeals met on May 27th and granted a variance for a piece of property on Fado Lane to reduce the rear yard from the required 40 feet to less than 40 feet. It just needs to be a piece of information for your minutes. That's all I have.
Good. John?
I do want to say that I completely support the meth abatement ordinance and the reason for making the motion table last week was to ensure that one final sort of are the landlord's questions answered. I think Dave believes they are answered, so I do hope that it's taken up in the future. You know, I know that, again, we want to make sure that they've had all the chance to respond to, but I do think it's important. I hope you do.
I have nothing, but I thought if that gentleman was wanting to speak, or is he with this group?
No, no, I'm just a local resident. I figured it's time for me to start coming in.
Just sticking your nose in and that's good.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for coming in. Dave?
Just a couple of comments, based on what Ron had to say about the police officers and the stop signs. Still, there's so many people that just blow through that stop sign at Smithfield and Hart Street. There's going to be tragedy here someday and they're doing it even when, you know, school's almost out, but there was an SUV that went through that stop sign about a week ago and it was high rate of speed. And people just need to pay attention, they really do. I appreciate David's summarization of the ordinances. I wasn't the one saying that we had too many, but I do think, I got four or five that I want to bring up sometime in the near future that are not necessarily new ordinances, but I think we need to make some revisions in some of the ones that we have and I've talked about... And I've talked about, you know, we're looking at the fire and police fee and looking at, I think we need to revisit the BNO again because I don't think it's, it's not written in totalitarian, needs to be. And there's a couple others that I think we need to revisit. And I think it's healthy for governmental agencies to revisit their old ordinances to determine what, you know, we need to do to make things better or there are things out there that we need to, we don't really need to have that in that kind of language anymore. And Mr. Clemmons has suggested at some point in time that we, I don't know if you put them all yet on the, on the computer yet, Rich or not, but you've made that suggestion before that we need to sort of codify it.
Yeah, I think that's something that is needed.
I think that would be a good idea. That's all I had to say. All have a nice weekend.
Thank you. Would entertain a motion, we entertain. I just, anybody else out there got anything they want to say? Jerry?
I just want to invite everybody to the car show, or flash from the past that we're going to have on the 25th and the 26th of July. Come down, enjoy yourself, spend some hard earned money and help us out, help the kids.
That's what it looks like, Rich. That's how it looked like.
Keep it right there.
We appreciate your support also.
One other thing.
Okay, Pam.
Stockard Youth Center is having a yard sale tomorrow. So I know it might be a little late, but if you have anything you want to get rid of, you want to donate, really make some money, they're having it tomorrow, so you could drop it off at Stockard Youth Center.
We're having, serving lunch there, we'll leave.
Yes, yes.
For breakfast.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you. Thank you. And so I'd entertain a motion, we entertain the executive session, 698-4 for property matters and possible litigation.